For interviews and interviews and then a recommendation would be made to the council as to the selected candidates for hiring. If you're going to ask me who's involved in all of that, and that is a process we have had to do. Question number, the next question that was asked by Mr. Akers in his presentation is how long will the term be? Again, as this is a city hiring position and it's not elected, there is no term in terms of the employment of the chief or any of us staff people that are in this room today. The last question is what are the city's plans to prevent this from happening in the future? My response to that would be the implementation of the recommendations from the workplace assessment, which Princeton Fire and Rescue Department members are encouraged to participate in, buy their input, so we can put safeguards and procedures and policies in place so that we don't repeat your serial. So I believe those answered questions that were raised by Mr. Akers. So now we're trying to get over to the mayor to take initial questions.
Mr. Akers, did we miss any questions?
Uh, none of that, but I got a few more.
Me too.
Now it's your turn. Let's do, uh, keep this as early as we can. When you come up, remember to state your name and address, and we'll go on from there.
My name is Drew Lillinger. I live at two zero eight North Avenue, South Princeton. And I don't think that the fire department works at your pleasure. I don't think that the police work at your pleasure. I think that the police and the fire, the fire department are essential services for Princeton. And, um, I have, as you know, I have lots of experience with you and accountability. I'm just concerned that, that they're not going to, they should give the vote in their own fire team. Why, why is it that they don't, they fight in their own vote in their own fire team? They don't think it's most qualified? This is insane. They don't work at your pleasure. They have an essential job that they do in the city. You have a house fighter? Do you, do you, I mean, what is going on here is exactly the experiences that I've had with you guys. And something needs to be done to support them.
Hi, I'm Jessica Chase-White. My address is eleven eleven Triangle Court in Princeton. I'm here, I have three, my three young children in the back because my husband works out of town. So thanks for taking the time to hear me today. Um, I have a brother and sister-in-law on the department, so this is very, very personal for me. Um, I would like to know, first of all, ma'am, Michelle?
Yes.
If you are the supervisor of the chief, why did you not do the workplace assessment yourself and save us taxpayers up to seventeen thousand dollars? That is what I'd like to know. As I'm raising my three young children and the economy is horrendous.
Thank you for your question. Um, I will tell you that the reason that we need to-
Time out. I have two minutes to devote to our-
I'm sorry.
Okay, if you want to go ahead, I just want to make sure I get my other, I have two more questions.
Okay. The reason that we brought in a, an outside firm to perform a workplace assessment is essentially to, um, I guess have a neutral third party to hear the concerns and to ensure that everyone's opinions were held in confidentiality. And they are well versed in these types of assessments. And I understand that it is taxpayer expense. However, the council and upon my recommendation felt that this was the best way to get the best information for the council to consider.
I would just like to record to state that I don't agree with that. I think if you didn't do your job, you shouldn't have it. Because if I did my job, I'd be cannon heartbeat. That really- This is my time, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My brother and my sister-in-law are on this department. I want to know when their gear is going to be fixed. If they go in to say, "Your family!", why does my family suffer? I want to know. I want to date when it's going to be fixed. A date.
Um, would you like to ask your last question on that?
That's three. That I turned my, if I didn't do my job, I'd be fired into a statement because I'm not happy.
In response to the gear, um, I will take that out of the cap again. The mayor visited with the members of the department who were present at training on Tuesday evening. Um, so we do have a list of those specific firefighters who had gear concerns. And subsequent to that, uh, we entered into the storage room. And so, Ed, if you would be so kind as to put the photographs up. And if I can direct my next comments to Public Works Director Gerald and retired firefighter Gerald. Could you please tell us where this room is located, who has access and details?
This room is located in the hallway across from the chief, assistant chief, and captain's offices. Next, I'm going to be adding, um, uh, here is accessible by chief, assistant chief, and captain. What you're looking at is photos of gear, some of it has been used, some are mildly used, some are brand new. It's now becoming a better service. And, uh, new rooms gear, as long as it's still being moved down.
It's a fire over here.
And it was moved by a licensed person. There's gloves, safety vests, reflective gear. These are for home rescue. These contain suspenders, smoke exponents, visors for helmets, safety glasses. More turnout gear. Boxes on the shelf from bins are flashlights. There's brand new facepieces that have not been issued. Here's a multitude of boats with different versions, sizes. More helmets, safety gear. More turnout gear. These are extension gloves, some in mildly used conditions, some in containers that are still brand new. As well as firefighting gloves that were new and still used. And one, uh, first in the air. And these are flashbangs. And then, uh, there's a whole access to here is, uh, she has, uh, she has those. You had more helmets, some are standing plastic, these are mildly firefighting helmets.
Do you have a follow-up to that? So if this is all gear that is usable, did we lack leadership to use that gear? Ultimately, it's not being used. All of my brother-in-law's boots have holes in them.
Ma'am, I will answer that question every twenty, thirty years on service. When I'm in, if I had something that failed, I'd leave my cap.
So you're a transfer claimant?
What I'm saying is that, you know, I'm not transferring. They were issued to me with holes in them.
They were issued with holes in them?
Noted the chief. When I got them, he handed them to me.
NFPA standard says, "When is gear supposed to be replaced?" Because I could tell you by looking in that picture, some of that's a hell of a lot older than what it's supposed to be.
If you would, if you have a comment or a question, Mr. Akers, please.
Yeah.
I have another follow-up to my garage. I think I have a little bit of time left. I would like to know if the chief isn't doing his job within the department, why do we think that it is acceptable to give him a lateral move to a different responsible position? That I have to pay for? It sounds like you guys are all in each other's pockets. Who's got an answer? Because that's why I see. I'm really frustrated, you guys. Who's got an answer?
Well, it's not an answer. We'll be sure to pass the answer thing.
Well, you should have, you're prepared to rub it in our faces that there's gear sitting there.
Again, we're not here to debate.
That's fine. You know what?
Taken.
We'll vote. It's fine. We'll vote.
Taken here, comment, and we'll address the issue.
How will we be notified of, of issues that are being addressed? Because I have three young children. My husband works out of town. How am I going to be notified of what's going on? Because I feel like you guys are all very quiet.
I believe you've sent me, uh, an email.
I didn't respond to. Sure did.
Yeah, Ashley, you guys don't even respond.
I'll second that. I sent an email and I didn't get a response either.
So the biggest, the most recent, the safety equipment and gear problems were not brought to anyone at the city level as a concern until three weeks ago. When we received an urgent call that was answered and picked. And still, at no time was one single safety gear or piece of equipment brought to our attention.
That's chief's fault.
The chief is a city employee.
So I have a question for the assistant chief and the captains in the room. You have access-
It's not your time. Why don't you get mine?
Okay, do you want to answer the question?
Yeah, but you're giving us the runaround.
You're giving us mine.
I'm answering your questions. At no point did the assistant chief or any of the captains, as well as the fire chief, take these firefighters into that room and give them new safety gear when it has been available to them this whole entire time? That is answered to your question.
No, but it's outdated. And I know it's a fact, but there's my brother.
Can I respond to that?
Please.
My question?
Sure.
So most of that gear in that room is expired or damaged?
Oh dang, you slapped.
If somebody comes up with a concern, we can give them new gear because there's hard maybe new gear. Because she has no journey, but I can show you damaged gear never. Any concern that was brought to a captain or to myself? Can I finish my sentence? Can I please finish my sentence?
Let them finish!
Let the community speak!
Can I finish my sentence, please? Any concern that was brought to a captain or myself was brought to Ron and we discussed them in exec board meeting, minute, exec board meetings. We have minutes of these concerns being brought forth for the last three months. And we showed them fearsome within those meetings.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you. I would like to respond to some of that. I was at the last of the fire exec board meetings. And whether there was some discussion on a few things like tracks last night, pipe hole. Not while I was there was there discussion on personal gear. The only time I heard questions about personal gear is from somebody that mentioned something on a social media. That's what I know about it. That's what I know. I was at the fire hall on Tuesday and just about every member was there looking at the room. I don't know everybody in here. But looking at the crowd in the room, just about everybody was there. I had twenty-one items that were brought to me. And some of them were turnout gear that had wearing tear on it. I don't know what degree of that turnout gear is. But the face masks, helmet parts, I understand that those parts are in that room. And as a captain, assistant chief, chief, all have access to that to replace those parts. Is everything brand new? No, it's not. But none of this stuff you have is brand new after the first fire you're in. You've got holes in your boots and there's no other boots. And yeah, well, aggressive. Alright, alright.
Alright, my name is Susan Coulson. Um, I am within Wyatt Funchup. Um, so first thing that I have to ask is, is our chief currently still employed and getting a paycheck through the city council? Yes?
Yes, he is employed so much.
So right now I see him as non-participant. He's not participating in this. So I would like to ask if, since we do not technically have a fire chief that can directly answer our questions, um, can we put the assistant fire chief in charge?
Uh, no, uh, there is, it's the same council's job. Your point, the chief, chief, still, still working, still doing his job.
As far as I'm concerned, the city council isn't doing their job at this point.
And, and, and that's fine, but again, one person at a time. Thank you.
Really?
The answer to your question is-
More force left than I have.
Yeah. Yeah.
The answer to your question is-
No, okay. So the next thing I wanted to add to it is transparency. And obviously, there's been a lot of non-transparency issues that I've occurred. Um, the first thing that I'd like to address is the fact that the fire advisory board meeting minutes are like nowhere to be found. And I know that that's where a lot of issues have come up. Um, so I don't understand why we don't have access to that. It should be on the city website. It's not. So can somebody address that, please?
We will correct that.
When?
I will assign someone to pull those minutes and get them posted.
Okay. Because I hear that there's been a lot of, um, issues at those meetings. And the fire advisory boards, for all of you that don't know, um, those are people that are living in townships that are on maybe township boards, and they bring their concerns to the city council to have them addressed. And, um, there has been meetings where people have walked out. So that's an issue. Um, and if that's happening, if there's no transparency, we don't know what's happening in those meetings, how are we supposed to trust you? Next thing I would like to address, Ron Morris, who is not here, chief one. Um, so I'm just going to speak as if he was here. So Ron, I'm going to call you out directly because you have failed in the last year to abide by the Princeton Fire Department handbook um, for being there to have the backs of the firemen and firefighters in this community. The lack of communication I know has happened, has decreased dramatically in the past year. My husband's a fireman. Ron used to call my husband during the week to go do things. He doesn't anymore. Um, just recently, there was some sort of like last minute burn that happened, and it happened the day of. No notice. So in the last year, I want to know, who is he answering to? Is he, is he literally the answering to city council or the city chief? Because it seems like he's kissing your guys' butts instead of doing what he's supposed to be doing. Good job, Ron. So lack of communication. The firemen have gotten none. It was literally, not even making this up, guys. So the trainings for the year, like last year, my husband got an email at the end of December explaining when the trainings were going to be. They didn't get them until literally the assistant chief sent out an email saying when the trainings were going to be. And then like two hours later, then Ron decided to send out a follow-up email? That's full up. That's completely up. So the lack of communication. So if you plan on putting him into an emergency response position within the city, come on. Like, as a community member and a taxpayer, I'm not, I don't want my money going to someone that can't even respond who's a fireman when they're asking questions. That's ridiculous. Last thing. We can't complain without a solution. So I would like that for a solution. I don't believe that retirement is enough. I would like to see Ron step down completely. How do the taxpayers trust this new position that you're going to be giving them? Okay? Is he actually an emergency response manager? How much oversight is he going to have in the fire department? Which should be zero because obviously he can't do his job now as chief. He's not even here tonight to face the music. If you want to face the music from the very beginning, it would probably not be this bad. And I would love to talk to Ron. How embarrassing for him. How embarrassing for this city right now. You've got how many news people here? These guys are going to walk out February eighth if Ron has anything to do with this fire department. They're done. You think that's a joke? It's not. So to tell every single one of you, "Put on turnout gear and jump into a burning house yourself", or do CPR on a two-year-old that's dying, I want you to seriously consider how, what that's going to look like when you have zero firemen. Because that's what's going to happen if Ron has anything to do with this place. It's going to happen. The other thing I want to point out to the citizens is that previously, in this city, there has been corruption. If you don't know about it, Office of State Auditor. Okay? I know this isn't from you guys specifically, but there are a few of you here that were here when this happened. Money, okay, shuffled wherever, has happened. It's really easy to find. It's right here, guys. I'll leave it up here.
My name's Dan Ryan. My address is five four six nine Eighteenth Street, Princeton. I'm a Princeton firefighter. I just want to talk about this so-called gear room. As it was stated, most of that gear is used or expired. It is issued to pro weeks for training purposes only. My mask was damaged in a training burn. The moment we came out and seen our masks were damaged, I, myself, walked to the chief and showed him my mask and said, "Look", and he said, "Yes, those need to be replaced." I have a small mask. There's two people in this department that have a small mask. I did not go to that room and get another mask. That was not, it wasn't, I wasn't able to do that. It took three months. It took somebody to call OSHA for my life. If that was to fail, I would lose my life. What's it cost? What is my life valuable for? If I can't serve my community, go save somebody else. If I lose my life, guess what? Now the firefighters have to pull me out and not focus on the community or the house, or the members of that household inside that fire because they're trying to save me. My, my life isn't worth a five hundred dollar fix? We had, somebody asked to call OSHA about that? That's, there's nothing wrong with that. There should be no budget on life. That's absolutely unacceptable. And to say that this, this gear room, there's no new equipment that is usable, no necks hooks. Yes, maybe a couple of helmets. And even then, when I got my red helmet, I had to wait for it because they were on order. So to say that this gear is in this room, most of it's used and trashed and expired. And actually, I could throw a lot of it away. That's all I have to say.
Justin Akers, Princeton, Minnesota. So if you guys don't think you're corrupt, why is, uh, take OSHA? Why does it take two thousand twenty-four to even bring up the gear? Why couldn't that have been brought up before? Also, the last meeting, Benny, why'd you step down? Is that because Bob Giraud was a firefighter before? Stepped down and gave the, the mayor the role of the fire head clerk.
Why you ask her to do that?
Okay.
Because my thought that that would make the fire advisory board function better.
Function better or look better for you guys?
I don't know what, I don't know. There's no looking better. I mean, it's, 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 there's a personality issue that sometimes happens and people don't get along. That doesn't, that's not helpful. So that was solely to make the fire advisory board run better.
Okay, so for this new position for Ron, why isn't there a process to know who, how to determine who sent and who chooses the position, the terms, and duties that he will be doing?
That was already established. Same as last time, right?
Correct.
Yeah? Why, why do we have to wait?
Honor be waiting. Why can't it be addressed now, today?
Because it's the responsibility of the city council to renew a doctorate. We don't have job descriptions for either fire chief, an emergency manager, before them tonight. It's not on the agenda.
Citizens want the fire department to choose their chief.
No one's got all of here and lifting gears in, in being large. Is the open door, way to open door. So why is anybody being opposed to hiring an outside, neutral third party to try to get to the bottom of this? To help us? And you, you see the bottom?
Because you're their client!
Yeah, they're paid by you.
You guys picked them. We didn't get to pick.
And we're happy to have your trial.
You're their client. You're paying them to find what you want to, you're looking for. It's not neutral. It's not neutral. It's biased.
You're calling, you're calling thirty-three firefighters liars, that's.
Yeah. The fire department needs to hold energy.
Thirty-three, thirty-six firefighters. You're calling them liars.
But the idea that because the city of Princeton is paying for this outside workplace assessment means that the city is somehow controlling this is absolutely hateful.
You're an attorney. You know how this works. They're attorneys. They are some of the best attorneys in the state.
A lot of question, as a tremendous amount of expertise in doing this exact thing and has been doing it for a very long time and has done it for many, many cities. And they have done so successfully by communicating with each and every one of you in a private confidential manner, so that each person can say whatever they want to say. But not just, not just that, not just allowing them to say what they want to say if it's safe to say it. But then actually collating all of that information is coming to the council and presenting to you recommendations to try and fix everything that's wrong with this. Getting in line and yelling and screaming isn't going to move the ball anywhere. Let the professionals do their job. Work with them, please. Let them get the information and let's all try and fix it. If that's something truly is.
Why hasn't it been known with other mayors, like Brad Tumacher or others? Why is it up now?
I don't know that I can't answer that question.
Why can't I answer that question? Why can't I answer that question?
They're probably looking at the problem. We weren't aware of the problem at that time.
Okay. So, and now?
Ooh, get huffy puppy.
I understand that, you know, I'm not everybody's stuff to be okay. And I have to be okay with that because I was elected, elected twice. By doing the job the way I see fit to do it. I'm trying to give everybody a chance to talk. Put their input in, that goes for council members, it goes for staff, it goes for all of you.
Well, then give the firefighters...
Let me answer. If you're gonna, if you're just gonna throw a different question every time, I can't answer your question. So I give everybody a chance to talk. Get their input. And we'll try to figure this out.
I think if you give firefighters their choice to pick their chief? Not ruled by city council or the government? And be able to have two years and be able to re-elect their chief? We will not have this problem in the future. We can't have it in the past.
Just give it back!
That way you guys don't need to hold anybody accountable, they'll do it themselves.
There wasn't a problem in the past.
I will answer that question. And I'll answer it by saying, in two thousand eighteen? Between the fire department, the fire advisory board? They came to the city council with the recommendation to hire a chief. Non-elected chief. We took that recommendation. So, if you've got a question on how that worked? Then, that's how that ends.
The department didn't, Ron didn't.
Can we hold a minute? From the department?
The department didn't, yeah.
Since you brought up two thousand eighteen when the townships came to you? What happened to the ad hoc committee? There was supposed to be an ad hoc committee that was a city council member, township supervisors? The administrator that were supposed to do reviews on the fire chief? And that never happened. What happened to the ad hoc committee? Where did that go?
Well, I don't know the answer to that because I was not on the city council.
Well, you just brought up two thousand eighteen. Well, I'm asking you a question about two thousand eighteen.
No, you're asking me a question about after two thousand eighteen.
No. It was in two thousand eighteen, the committee was supposed to be formed.
When you guys hired Ron? You were supposed to form the ad hoc committee. I, I'm not, not trying to be rude, I'm just asking a question.
I am telling you? That in two thousand eighteen, I was on the city council. In two thousand nineteen, I was not. So if the decision was made to hire a fire chief? I approved of that. Because that was the recommendation from the firefighter, firefighters? And the, and the fire advisory board? What happened after two thousand eighteen? I was not here, I can't answer that.
Is there any other council member that has, could answer that?
I wasn't here.
I can, I can attempt to respond, Dan. Um, I, I...
I think that would've solved a lot of problems.
I, I do, I, and I, and I do, there are, there's a memo in the file? That says exactly what you're stating. And all I can say is? And I wasn't here in twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen.
Oh, I know that.
So, all I can say is that? It was failure of the past administration to not follow through with that commitment that we made. And I agree that if that was the intent? Then, in all likelihood, we probably wouldn't be sitting where we are today. Because if that ad hoc committee had been established and was meeting regularly? When I came, when I would've been hired in twenty twenty, I would've kept... It wasn't until I started digging in the files that I even, that I even discovered it.
Do you have my name and address for the record, since I spoke? Are you fine?
I, I, I know who you are, so we'll just, we'll just fill it in for you.
All right, David Bowers, City Council, North Princeton. Uh, I mean, I got a few questions. I hate being in front of people so fast that I'm up here saying something. Sorry about my outburst earlier. Saying that I don't trust any, but I don't... Wha- what is so hard to figure out here? That one man and equipment can't be figured out? Where, I know, me and multiple other people, our property taxes in Princeton went up this year. That's not speaking for everybody here, but I'm sure everybody has. Where, where is all this money going that we can't fund that shit? They created a, and go find me for the fire department? To try to get them equipment? Cause you guys are not allocating money to that. So, where, where is all this money going? That we, we can't get them the equipment they need? Because they walk away? Any of you guys, I don't know any specifically? But if you live in town, your property tax is gonna go up. Your insurance is gonna go up. We lose the fire department? That fucks with a lot of stuff. And I'm sorry for swearing on this, but I, I, I am so mad about this that... Where, where is all of this going that we can't work with our fire department? You get nine tenths of the fire department to walk away because of simple things? The community should be taking care of this. The city council and the city should be dealing with it.
But you gave the chief a raise?
Yeah. And he's not on there. I, I, I just, I, I don't understand where all this is going, go ahead.
Excuse me, I have something to add, excuse me, I don't know if that's... Chief Lawrence will not have anything to do with the fire department.
Come March? But that don't solve nothing for now. They want him gone now to stay here.
That we can't change that?
So you guys are all willing to lose our fire department? Or is it because you're saying there's nothing you can do right now?
You, uh, okay, so? Fire department has wanted? Chief Lawrence to be removed?
Yes.
From the fire.
And, and giving him a different position, I don't think is gonna help, but...
He's not gonna answer.
That's, that's not what's happening.
That is what's happening.
I mean, you, you, you guys literally said it like thirty minutes ago? That he might be moving to a different position, it might be a part-time, but...
You have to figure out the roles.
He already have that. Will not have anything to do with the fire department. It'll be something he was doing before? And will not have any supervisory role over the fire department? Won't be involved with the fire department, he's retired from the fire department. He won't be in the fire hall. What's his new role?
So then he, so then he, he, he could go make somebody else piss off then? And I mean, I, I guess, I don't know what you're, what, what you're getting at there. It, it, it's a retirement, it should be a retirement at that point, and making that many people happy.
I'm gonna repeat my point on that, Robert. You made it very clear, you don't trust any of us. Let the third-party process play out? And then we'll get this figured out? And get a good solid solution? You left us no choice but to do that.
No, in, in, in fact, I, I respect you because I know your family? And everything. And I, I, I don't know anybody else on the board here, but I respect what you have to say. You were put in a position where we had to bring in a third-party to help us? But then you got it, get to the bottom of it. Okay, so I'll be nice about this then? You guys are bringing in a third-party? But why couldn't that money have been put towards the fire department?
Don't burst.
But that's not only my question. You ask almost anybody in this room right now. Why are you guys spending ten to twenty grand on a third-party? When that could've fixed most of the problem with fire department? Well, just cause I don't trust you guys doesn't interest me. But, 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 but I mean, it, it could've been put towards them, is what I'm saying. And it could've solved most of this problem.
Yes.
But it's easier to hire a consultant on it? And... No, we gotta pay for it. And I think I had the agreement here that everybody's taxes went up this year, but where's the money going? And I will step off on that because I need to, so...
Good job, thank you.
The raise that, uh, Chief Lawrence received? He was one of the fifteen city employees? Fifteen, seven, uh, city employees? That were on the agenda for their annual stepping increase raise? Um, it's something that's done across the board whenever an employee has reached a certain, uh, step? Within their pay structure pursuant to the city's, uh, personal policy. So, the city can't, you know, allow or deny an employee their stepping increase. They're, they're required to give it. So, that, he was just one of fifteen, I think on that, that meeting? And there may have been more, the meeting after that? So that's what that was. Just so that, just so that's, we can be upset if we want to be, let's talk about that.
That's not based on performance at all?
No, it's not a merit-based rating, it's based on the personal policy for every single city employee.
James Arben, uh, address two eight four seven one hundred forty on the street. I'm also on Princeton Fire. I just want to clarify one thing that was stated by the mayor? Is the fire department and the, uh, uh, fire advisory board approach the city? Or a, a chief moving forward? And I get that, but what you wanna say about the department at the time? And if anyone else who was on the department at the time would like to correct me? But, that was not the case. We found out as a department, I read at the paper that we were doing a half-time gate chief. The fire department did not approach you guys. Saint Ron Lawrence told us that you guys approached him and wanted a chief.
Hi, it's Madeline Yalca, from Ryan and Township. I know that this has been addressed before, but Ron Lawrence got thirty-three votes of no confidence? And you guys are willing to give him a new city position? But I was just wondering if this is going to be available to more than just Ron? Or if he's already declared to have that position?
It's not a new city position, he already holds the title. And he has for many years. It's not a new position.
And it's not combined with the fire team?
The only condition is that there could be some affiliation of some sort of? It won't be in any supervisory, reporting to any type of position.
It will not. So we can still respond with the fire department?
No. No.
No. Okay, cause you said earlier that they were combined, the emergency and the chief?
There's a position. The current position he holds? Has a title of fire chief slash emergency manager. It's a currently a combined position. So he currently serves both roles.
So he will no longer be fire chief, but will serve the other roles? You're gonna have two separate roles for that now?
Correct. They...
It is in the budget. It is in the budget. So, I'd say the first, I live on like eleven seven dab, Princeton, Minnesota. Um, do you think I could get like a motion or a petition to start the ad hoc program that was overlooked earlier?
Yes.
Because I think it's completely unfair to have these categories in, like, a company that's not able to use? Just because you guys couldn't make a simple audit or...
So, this, this will go back to, um, every chance that I get? I am really encouraging the fire department to participate in this thing. And it's, we're asking you to do it. I mean, you can choose, I guess you can choose to not do it. But I wish you would. Okay? If you want, if, if you need this ad hoc thing? That, that'll be part of the recommendation. And I'm not opposed to that.
Okay. Cause I just think it's a lot easier to get one of one man's of thirty-three.
And, and you got rid of...
Effective March first, that's not right now. Somebody not done yet. Somebody's not bringing that.
Ted Johnson, one three five two six, every night, I do a little rest on the jump shot.
Just wanna make the same, I guess, why I'm being asked the workplace assessment? Thirty-three of us clearly told you exactly what we wanted. We clearly addressed the issues via the news. Did you guys first buy letters to the public? Buy the newspaper? Or let's spend taxpayer, taxpayer dollars and do the assessment? Question number two? Is Mr. Lawrence's new job rules and responsibilities gonna be available by February eight? And finally, my last statement is, like I said, I was involved in the township. I choose to be in Princeton. I work in Princeton. Two oh five door, never drop, United City Police Service. I know all the streets. The agent, the emergency response can get people's houses faster because I deliver in this area. But I can tell you what, from February eighth? Fall, the fire department has a spot for me. Thank you.
I can't help it, Princeton Township. Uh, question I have? Uh, if you create, well, not create, cause Ron already has the, uh, the, uh, emergency manager position? Uh, this vehicle that the city purchased with COVID funds? Is that vehicle going to stay with the emergency manager? That does not get used all that much? Or is that vehicle going to stay in the fire service? Because there isn't any money in the budget or in the accounts to buy new command vehicle? And I don't wanna see the township get another be, bill, buy another emergency vehicle that we've already bought. How many? Uh, that's my concern there. And I'd also like you guys to make sure these guys know that? The emergency manager, the pay for that comes from FEMA, does it not? It's not actually coming out of your tax paid dollar, your residence dollar? Does that not come from FEMA?
It comes, yeah, I don't...
You are, you are...
Let these guys know that, that some of that, it does come from FEMA. It's not affecting the city residents there. I'm not, you don't need, but I'm, you know...
We're taking our side of this.
I don't know that we talked about where a vehicle is supposed to be.
Chad Rayman, thirteen hundred seven three one, Princeton, Minnesota. Uh, I was the member voted by the fire department to be on the ad hoc committee in twenty eighteen? Um, for the chief's position in twenty eighteen? And, just like Jim did said that? That was, that did not come from the fire department. That was, we found out late in the game? That was something that Ron had been working on and convinced the council that the position we needed? And then dumped it on us as if, as, within the context that the mayor was asking for, the mayor was with him at the time? Um, with the administration in? Um, I think there might be, anyway, that ad hoc committee, we had one meeting. We had one meeting, I was able to voice the concerns of firefighters? And state that we didn't want this. We did not want this, and this is exactly why. Because we were used to being able to, there's, there's always been an evidence. You've got, you know, there's been really good chiefs, there's been bad chiefs throughout the years. The thing is, is every two years, we have the opportunity to vote. So if you had somebody that wasn't working out? We were able to vote in a new person. And, we were losing that, and we knew it. And so, I voiced that concern? The administrator at the time, uh, Berman, said? Chad, you don't worry about it, we're gonna have these ad hoc committees at least annually? And you'll be able to voice, you know, let us know if things are not working out? We'll get a new chief on the department. That never happened. And we're in the exact predicament that we were all afraid of in twenty eighteen? When I was forced on us to have a chief appointed by this.
So you just have one more thing to say? We all raise our children? And correct me if I'm wrong, but I raise my children that if you make a mistake, it's okay? And it can be fixed, right? You guys would save so much space right now? If you would just admit that this was a mistake? And the ad hoc committee should've went forward, it didn't? And that Chief Lawrence actually held it back in two thousand eighteen? Um, either he went to you guys, or he went to the city council, or the city council, or the mayor went to him? Or whatever it is? But we can obviously say that it was a mistake. And it could be fixed right now? All you have to do is turn over the chief's position back to the firemen? So they can vote in on it? All you have to do is turn over the chief's position back to the firemen so they can pollinate every two years. It's okay, we can fix this. Just give it back to those guys. It's not that hard to do. I know you guys could do that. As a city council, you guys could come together and you could say, okay, let's just let them figure it out then if they think that they don't wanna do it better. And it would be a lot of agony and misery, and Michelle wouldn't be bothered so much. Jack, you've been on the city council for years. You've never- Oh, for your second term. Okay, well, somebody up here has been up here for a while. Victoria, I know you've been up here, have you ever seen this kind of crap before?
No.
No.
When I was not in the council at the time, uh-
Right. But it's okay. I just wanna say, just- Mayor, have some sort of hope. Do something, give it back to the guys who make the war.
I'm gonna go back to my original point. This is what this investigation, okay, local theory, party assessment, is going to, and we will establish arguments based on math.
But, Mr. Edmonds, this, but, Mr. Edmonds, the whole idea of this is that, that it shouldn't have even gotten to this point.
And maybe so, but until we investigate it, we don't-
But there shouldn't be happening when we have thirty-three-
Well, where we're at today-
We have thirty-three guys.
We can't deal with yesterday. We have to deal today and the next.
But yesterday, thirty-three guys, you're gonna, you, you guys are totally okay right now, sitting in your chairs. Thirty-three guys are gonna walk away. February eighth.
Then what?
I don't feel safe as a Princeton person if something happens to my-
Very easily, just within the next week or so.
I don't know how you guys are gonna pay with losing an entire fire department?
That are volunteers. They don't, like, they volunteer their time to help you guys and to save your families. And you're gonna let thirty-three of them, out of thirty-six, walk away just 'cause you can't get rid of one man?
Don't, don't let them walk.
As of effective March first. Not right now. And I'm telling you that he's retired, when it is not March first.
So, you want, you want, take a witness. Remember to bring her out, try to take it.
It is me.
I didn't-
I'm sixteen years old and I feel unsafe in my own town. Because thirty-three of them are gonna walk away. What if something happens to me when I'm home alone? I'm a teenage girl. Okay, guys?
Sounds like a lot of lawsuits.
As it is. Much less without firemen or police or anything. And you're just gonna let them all walk away? That doesn't make sense to me.
Good job, Sam, Princeton, Minnesota. I'm an E N T student for past two years. In those two years, I've run seventeen live calls where I, I've held children in my arms as they die. I've almost been killed three times in the line of duty as a student of an E N T service. The safest job out of all three first responders, police, fire, and EMS. If I can die as a student due to outside circumstances that cannot be controlled, why won't you protect my, my brothers? Even though I'm not a full-fledged E N T yet, why can't you protect my brothers and sisters with something that you can control? Can, can you bring up that picture of the, uh, closet with the helmet in?
Yes, we can do that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Just give it a minute.
Yep. Just tell me when it's done. Okay, uh, nope. I'll go back, that one. Okay. Underneath that black helmet, what, what is the condition of that face mask? It is cracked and it is useless. I would also like to bring up the, the funding. You cannot buy three ambulances with the funding that you were giving my brothers. One heart scanner that only requires twelve stickers across your left breast. Costs thirty thousand dollars. A fair portion of the money that you're giving my brothers. You can't afford with the money that we give you to fix a small problem on a fire truck that can deflect a car going fifty, sixty miles an hour. That almost happened to me on a call. I almost died on a call because someone was on their phone going sixty miles an hour. They stopped, thank God, but we had a fire truck behind me that was positioned just so that if the car hit, it would've gone off and not hurt anyone else except the driver. And we could've helped them. Had that truck not been there, because they have all the equipment, I possibly would not be here. So, why aren't we funding our, why aren't we funding these guys better? Why aren't we taking care of them? They run into hell, literal hell, to protect you. Why aren't you taking care of them? And Miss Jenny, based off of your body language that I've been trained to look at and perceive?
Yes.
Oh, duh, 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 we have cameras, I can back and prove my- Where, what will you do when these thirty men walk off? You, everyone that I've seen come up here, they've all, you've been dismissive, you may face, what are you going to do? Because you clearly, you, you, you clearly have all the solutions because these problems still matter. So, where, wha- what will you do? And why is a seventeen-year-old, I am a child in the eyes of law, why do I have to be the voice of reason? Why am I the voice of reason in this? I'm a child. Why, why am I the voice of reason? Why do I have to say this to keep myself, my brothers, my sisters, and my family, my blood family, safe? Why do I have to say this to keep these men that will walk into hell to protect you? Why do I have to say this? This bothers me yon measure. That is all. Obviously, my name is Dan Radman, fire department, Pittsburgh, my address. I just want a chief that's got my badge, that's here for me. Where's my chief tonight?
Right. Right.
Where is he?
He's hiding.
I understand what's going on, but regardless, where's my chief? Why, why don't I matter? Why doesn't the community matter? Assistant chief's here. This has been a lifelong dream of mine to be a first responder, and I'm stuck in this kind of mess? This, why? It's, it didn't need to be. It didn't have to go this far. That's all.
One last quick question, then I'll stop talking. Um, verified Ron's potential to be the emergency manager. Did you guys, I mean, did he just get, because he was a fire chief? Did he go through any kind of training? What?
Dan, I can't answer that question, that was-
That's probably a question you should've figured out before you just-
So, from what I remember about how it was in the past, Roxbury was the chief, he was also doing that job.
Yep, for five thousand dollars a year. Which I, I, I'm not saying he was grossly underpaid, but I'm just asking, did anybody check to make sure that Ron had the credentials? I mean, did Jim have the credentials? I served with Jim, I served with Ron. Did anybody check to make sure that he had the credentials with FEMA to hold that position? That's all I'm asking.
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if we did.
That might be one of you.
So, my name is David Meyer. I actually don't live in this community, but with all this community support that we have had behind our organization, Dusty the Cressy Rusty Dumpster, I am the president of the organization. I am actually the one that kind of wanted to help with this whole situation in the first place because I've seen a fellow firefighters cry for help. They want a chief that's gonna stand behind them. There is a whole community that has started this group, one point two thousand members overnight.
Can I stop for just a second?
Yes. David Meyer, forty-five forty, two hundred sixty-first Avenue, Northwest, East Sandy, Minnesota, five five zero four zero. Why is it that a community has to come together as we have allowed you guys as officials to make the decisions, to hold the financial funds for these guys? We started a five oh, we started a five oh one C three in the process. We are working to this day to raise funds for this fire department, even though they don't want us to do this for them. They don't want the community to do this. They want you guys as the city officials to hold accountability to what's happening in this, in this city. I have never imagined with all the stuff that has came to me, all the news reporters, all the political drama, I have stopped my living of my life just to support these guys because they truly deserve it. I stopped working because I, I am going to keep fighting for something that they deserve. Why can't we just work together as a community together and make this better than what it is today? Make it better today, make it better tomorrow. Allow the fire, firefighters to decide. Let them choose who they wanna work under. You can't let all of them walk away. If they walk away, nobody's gonna be safe. How can we rely on Zimmerman? How can we rely on any other cities that are far away? By the time they get there, our houses will be destroyed. Those fires do take off to the point that I always wanted to be a firefighter. I always followed along with them. I grew up with Bran Fire Department. I walked their halls, I walked their eyes, I seen everything, but I was never able to be employed and be able to be deployed. Please, as an organization, please make a difference. Let us be able to move forward and make this community a better place today. That's all I gotta say, thank you.
Did you wanna add to that?
No.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I wasn't watching the clock. I don't think I have three minutes. Ken Murray, Township. I, I just wanted to ask the council if anybody in here knows how much Wyandotte Township was owed for overpayment? Anybody on the net? Michelle?
Ken, I'm still working on those numbers, and I apologize for not getting them. But I, I cannot answer that question right now.
Can you give me a ballpark figure that we can hear from Brian Melvin?
I cannot.
Brian, you got that figure?
Thirty-five thousand, yep.
Wyandotte Township was overcharged about thirty-five thousand dollars. And at these advisory board meetings, people say, I'm terrifications. I ask the same stupid questions that every board meeting. I, I thought I was at the wrong meeting. That's why I come here tonight. I thought maybe you guys had another meeting I should go to. But, uh, um, now, now you know what the figure is and why I'm here. One more thing I'd like to say. Um, I'm seventy-six years old, and I've seen a lot of businesses close. Usually when they close, someone's let go, you take the keys and they're not allowed to go in the business. You could have a problem here sabotaged, maybe your chief would do something. Why wouldn't you, why would you take that responsibility on not immediately taking the keys and not letting him in the building? I don't understand that. I, I guess that's- Does anybody believe Brian Melvin's number? That-
I think that's kind of a process. I believe that there was error in the building.
And when will we get an answer on the refund? 'Cause I just gave my fire bill, and I'm trying to set my budget for March, and my constituents are asking me, they don't have much faith in me anymore, actually.
I understand. All I can say is I will be working on the numbers this weekend. And the intent is, uh, we have a fire advisory board meeting on February seventh. Thank you. Um, and an entire agenda packet will be going out next week, and that's part of the discussion.
And just one more question I wanted to ask, Dan. Hiller, is your, uh, was all your payments correct?
I don't think so.
And that was the same thing with Blue Hill Township. That's why Blue Hill left. I went to a couple of their meetings, tried to talk him and not leave him. Nobody else was there. I was hoping I'd see some of you guys. I said, please, there's a chance it picks up. I didn't see anybody else there. I think if this would've been solved and, and all of the billing would've been correct, Blue Hill Township would've been here if they would've been supported. Nobody's called me. I'll give you my phone number, seven six three, three seven zero, three three five five. Anybody in this building can call me. If I've done something wrong or said something wrong, call me and I, I'll, I'll be happy to help. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Have you got it? All right, all of the, all of those, um, comments were important, and I guarantee that we all heard them. Um, if we don't act fast enough, or we don't give you the answer that you want, um, you know, I guess that's what it is, but we're not gonna not listen to you, okay? We all want this to get fixed. You have, Chief Lawrence is retired, or will be retired shortly. There will be a new chief. And, you know, if we have a fire department, the fire department will have a chief. I hope that, I hope that you all stay and answer calls. I really, I really do hope you do.
I might be out of turn, but can I say one more thing? You guys are very capable of fixing this. You don't need to spend ten cents on hiring somebody for a house.
Too much money.
You guys have a lot of experience. Look at the facts, do the right thing, it'll be great. You're smart people. Don't spend it nickel on all the stuff.
Amen.
Amen.
Eric, you wanna follow along on the rest of the meeting? Is there anything else we need to say? We, anything, David?
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry. Is there a reason why the chief is not here today? That he still has his position? I mean, wouldn't it be, to me, it'd be a very, it's, uh, be very impressive for him to be here.
Quite frankly, and to be perfectly honest, he was excused from this meeting, okay? He was excused from the meeting because of everything that's been going on social media, and what would have happened had he been here. This is not something that any city employee should ever be subject to. You all have your say. You might not, you might not have had your chance to go straight at him, but you had your say. And we need to make things some measure of order. We need to move on. And I think we're onto the next item on the agenda. You wanna stay, feel free. Otherwise, drive safe, walk safe, peace out.